Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, February 7, 2023. It is 6:04. Thank you, Jimmy. I appreciate it. We're at the North High School Boardroom, and it's the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. 6:04 PM. I'm going to do a roll call. Ms. Johnson is here. Mr. Claffey's here. Ms. Brown will be attending. She's running a little bit late. We also have our student rep, Mr. Castellano. We have Mr. Donovan. And we have also with us tonight is -- I forgot.
It's okay. My name is Sue Blair.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Okay, first thing on the agenda is Title I purchases. And Mr. Donovan, did you want to start it? Do we want to have Ms. Blair start?
No, we'll have Ms. Blair. She's here to speak to the first two items on the agenda, which are Title I purchases, one for Chromebooks and carts, and the other for desks. So I will turn it over to Ms. Blair, and she can speak to it.
Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you, Dan. Good evening, everyone. As Dan has already said, I am the director of Title I, so I oversee the Title I grant. And as part of our reallocation of funds this year, we are looking to purchase Chromebooks for the K-2 population and storage carts to go along with those. The reason for the request for the Chromebooks is they are actually touchscreen Chromebooks. I don't want -- so I was a principal for 20 years for early childhood. But what I will tell you is for young children to use a keyboard is a very trying experience, especially if they don't know letters and never mind keyboarding skills. So we're looking at purchasing touchscreen Chromebooks so that children can spend more time practicing and learning skills. Also, we've purchased some software for reading, so it would support the children's developmental learning in their reading skills as well. So the Chromebooks are, as I said, touchscreen, essentially purchasing for K through 2 students in our five Title I schools. And the reason why I stress that is because school-wide schools are the only schools that can purchase Chromebooks or that the state will approve for purchasing Chromebooks. So if we had any targeted schools, we wouldn't be able to do that for them. The other part of this purchase is for our carts. I don't know if you know a lot about some of the purchases that principals both have made with regard to technology, but sometimes we get things without the proper storage carts. So we want to make sure that these are well cared for and well stored. The reason we're asking for the particular carts that have been recommended is because they come prewired. There's not the need of taking all the wires and feeding them through so that they attach to the 25 or 30 Chromebooks that are stored in the cart. Susan also did a wonderful job and went back to EarthWalk, and she actually got a $20 reduction in the cost of a cart. So instead of what we have here in front of us, the total amount would be $39,649 for the carts. And again, we're recommending that we do the EarthWalk carts because they are all prewired. I don't know if you've ever tried to wire a cart for Chromebooks, but I've heard it's a pretty miserable experience. I've never had to do it myself. So tonight, I'm asking that you approve the purchase of the Chromebooks from IT Insiders for a total of $334,544. And the Chromebook -- excuse me, Chromebook carts from EarthWalk. And as I said, that total now shifts from the $40,269 to $39,649. All of this funding will come from the Title I A account.
Mr. Claffey, do you have any questions?
No. No, I do not. I'm just trying to open the PDF, and I'm just having trouble. But I looked at it earlier, so I have no questions.
White paper's good. You can always open it.
Ask a dead tree, then.
I'm sorry, but I'm one of these people who have to write all over paper yet. Mr. Castellano, do you have any questions?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions here. You're talking about -- and I was talking with an advocate also about keyboarding and all this and touchscreen for young kids. So I was wondering, let's see, developmental skills of students. So K in kindergarten, they wouldn't have that keyboarding skill. But by the time they get to K through 2, where would those keyboarding skills start?
Well, hopefully, and of course, again, we're talking about developmental skills with children. And so, you know, we all don't develop the same way. But the intent would be, by the time they exit second grade, they would all have the keyboarding skills to be successful on a regular Chromebook with a keyboard.
So in kindergarten, we wouldn't have the keyboard, but first and second grade, we wouldn't have it either?
No. The programs that are presented now are pretty much presented with the touchscreen. So essentially, what they're doing is they're learning some keyboarding skills while they're using the touchscreen. So if you think about your phone, right, it's the same type of technology, and we can shift it depending on where the children are. I believe also, if I read correctly with these Chromebooks, we can attach a keyboard to them eventually if kids -- plus, we have the other Chromebooks at the schools with the keyboards attached. So if they're developmentally ready to shift, we would just shift them from a touchscreen to a regular Chromebook.
Okay. So this is research-based?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Okay. So, okay. Any other questions from, I guess, Mrs. Johnson here? Okay. So I'm going to make the motion to approve the purchase of the Chromebooks from IT Insiders totaling $334,544 and the Chromebook carts from EarthWalk for a total of now $39,649. The funding for this purchase is to come from the Title I A account. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're on to the desks.
Yes. So I guess I'll use my terminology with everything occurring post-COVID. One of the things we're working diligently to do in elementary schools is focus on student engagement. So what we're asking for tonight on behalf of the principals is to purchase -- they're called HECS desks. Hi. I just wanted to wait till she had a minute to get settled. Hi, Jessica.
And let me just say for the record, Ms. Brown arrived at 6:14. Thank you.
So we're looking at creative -- creating innovative learning spaces that will support flex grouping, STEM instruction, as well as collaborative learning opportunities. So one of the things that these HECS desks -- and I wish I could have brought a picture of the different configurations. But because of their shape, they allow for different types of groupings. That's essentially what they are. They're flexible. You can use them as a standalone desk for a student when a student needs to be by themselves. You can configure them into shapes where only two students would work together or as many as six to eight children. So it allows for project-based learning. It allows for collaborative conversations over STEM activities. And so we're trying to, if you will, we're trying to move away from desks in a row and, you know, only having one configuration, but giving children an opportunity to learn in an environment where they're comfortable and where they're engaged. So this is the beginning of, hopefully, something that will even go further in the district in being innovative and having innovative classroom spaces. So tonight, what I brought before you is just a small sample, and I'm guessing I'll be coming back later at another date to talk about other aspects of this. But what we're looking for is to purchase these desks this evening. As you can see, it's a count of 390. And I'm sure you know our population. So 390 desks is just the beginning. And it might be that we provide it just in a section of the classroom, you know, an alternative seating arrangement for particular projects or for particular groupings. But tonight, we're just asking that we start with 390 desks. You can see the different companies and what their costs were. The reason why we're asking for the Neo-shaped desks, so if you had a chance to look at the pictures, you can see that they're very unique. And if you actually had an opportunity to go into the website, you would see some of the different configurations that they allow for. So that's why the principals are asking for those desks in particular. So it would be 390 desks at a cost of $103,236.90. And all of these funds would also come from our Title I A account.
So we're looking at the Neo-shaped desks, right?
Yes.
And how much did you say they were altogether? 390 of them?
Let's see. For the total, 390 is $103,236.90.
Okay.
So if you didn't have a chance, it's these -- I want to call them funky-shaped desks.
Right. I did look at them because I was wondering. I get their funky shape, but when they get into -- like, kindergartners, maybe they don't have papers. But first grade and second grade, I was wondering why you wouldn't have a desk where they could put all their materials and everything to keep with them?
So now we have a lot of storage bins. A lot of the classrooms have areas where they have storage bins, either on shelves or in cubby areas. Again, it makes it so that it's a movable classroom. You're not assigned to a certain desk, but you go from one space to another depending on what you're doing and what you're learning.
Any questions from the committee? Mr. Claffey?
First, I don't know if -- Ms. Johnson has been in a classroom recently to look inside of an elementary, even middle school desk, but it's probably the last place you want students keeping their work because it's usually kind of like my closet. So the idea that they're going to keep -- you know what I mean? I was just in a middle school. My only question was, I'm trying to see if there's any kind of warranty with these products.
I know School Specialty is a very well-known company. As a principal, I used to purchase a lot of my things from them. I didn't look into the warranty, so I'm not going to tell you that there definitely is, but I'm sure they stand behind their product.
Any other questions, Mr. Claffey?
Just, would it be hard to find out before, assuming this is brought to the full board at our next meeting?
That would happen.
Yeah, we could find out what the warranty is. So when you vote on it at the full board, I'll bring that information.
Ms. Brown?
I apologize for my tardiness. And if you already answered this, I also apologize. What grades is this for?
So we're purchasing them for the K-5 schools, and the flexibility is up to the principals as to what rooms they will put them in. So it's not intended to be a whole classroom set, but actually desks that are shared throughout the school to explore the potential of having innovative -- it's called flexible seating, if you will, for students in the classroom. I don't know if you've ever been in a classroom lately. Some of you probably have. But you have children sitting on their knees or not wanting to sit at all and stand, or kids who want to actually sit on the ground. So we're exploring different options of flexible seating and flexible grouping for children to help with engagement and attention.
No, I think this is a really creative solution, and I think that there's a lot of potential at elementary school level particularly. And so that was -- I was wondering -- and my other question is exactly that. Were you purchasing them for particular classes, like an entire third-grade unit? Or will it be at the principal's discretion to disperse them?
I would say the principals know their schools best. And since I've only been here a few short months, I wouldn't be able to speak to that. But I can tell you, based on what I know of the principals, they would disperse them according to what they believe would service their children.
And I just have one other question regarding the material. So it says they have laminate tops. Has there been any interest or investigation into having them be whiteboard tops? Because I know that's kind of a hot topic.
I was fascinated by those when I was doing some of the research. There is the potential for that. But because they are new, they are much more expensive right now. So, you know, that may be something that we move towards in the future because I know when you're doing your math, you know, you'd love to write on a whiteboard right on your desk. And there's other opportunities for brainstorming and when you're doing collaborative learning. Yeah, they're fascinating. I just think they're a little bit too expensive, and they're very, very new. So the principals, and I'm representing the principals, have asked for these at that point, this point. But I wouldn't be surprised if that's something you see us bring before you at another time.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Castellano, do you have any questions?
No, I think it's a great idea, especially for, like, elementary level. I'm not sure how well it would work at, like, the high school level, per se, because a lot of the stuff is individual. Or for collaborative stuff, I don't know. A lot of the desks, you can easily move together anyway. Or some classes, like science classes, they have lab tables and stuff like that. But for the elementary level, I definitely see how that could be useful.
And to answer Mr. Claffey's question about going into the elementary schools and the middle schools, we just got into the middle schools, but we weren't allowed to enter any of the schools for a long time. So now we'll be able to hopefully get in and start looking and seeing how all this new equipment is working. Thank you, Mr. Claffey. Okay. Any other questions? No. Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the purchase of 390 Neo-shaped student desks from School Specialty for a cost of $103,236.90, funding to come from Title I A account. Do I have a second? Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
So I just wanted to say thank you because that's the end of my presentation for this evening, and it was very nice meeting you all. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
I'm sure we'll see each other again.
I'm sure we will. Okay, now the next thing on the agenda, I guess, is you, Mr. Donovan, CTE purchases.
Yes. Yes, CTE purchases. Hopefully, the next time there's a CTE purchase, we'll have the new assistant director or whatever her title is come and speak to these and add a little bit more background. But based on discussions with the engineering CTE program, and they've been working with their outside companies, they have -- they would like to purchase five engineering workbenches to do project work. They want them like you'd find in a typical setting out in industry. They'd be on casters. They'd be adjustable in height. This is what's used out there, so out in the real world, so the students can learn to do this work on using the equipment that they would out in the real world. Now, they went out and they got three quotes. They're suggesting -- they're fairly close in price, $10,000, $10,000, and $12,000. They would like to purchase the $12,000 with the main reason -- well, one reason is that the $12,000 vendor Form A Space, they arrive preassembled. The other two, you have to assemble. And the other thing is the Form A Space has a 12-year warranty versus a one-year warranty for the others. That was when I reached out to them and said, "How -- what's your main reason? Was it the assembling or was it the warranty?" And they said, "As Dante might attest, most high school students, it's better to get a 12-year warranty than a one-year warranty." So the recommendation is to approve the purchase of five engineering workbenches from Form A Space -- having a hard time with that at a cost of $12,177.95. And the funding for this comes from the Perkins Grant.
Any questions for members of the committee?
No. I think it seems reasonable. A 12-year warranty is -- you don't really find that much these days, so that seems worth the extra investment.
Mr. Claffey?
I'm just trying to remember. Is engineering at both high schools?
No, I think it's just at one high school. Do you know which one it's at?
The engineering program? Is it -- I'm not sure.
I know the CAD program is at South.
So I would guess it's at North. Do you think it's at --
Well, the CAD program is at South. Is that part of the engineering?
It's different.
Okay.
I was just wondering if there's -- it would potentially be an equity issue if one school or -- but this --
The CTE, so the kids could go back and forth and take --
Oh, I understand.
Kids from both schools can take it.
Yep.
I just want to let the record show that Dr. Andre showed up at 6:26 this evening. Thank you. Other questions, concerns? Okay. Then I'm going to make a motion to approve the purchase of five engineering workbenches from Form A Space at a cost of $12,177.95, funding to come from Perkins Grant. Do I have a second? Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is a quarterly credit card update.
Okay, so according to board policy, we report on the credit card usage on a quarterly basis. This is now a full year. And in your packet, if you're looking at it electronically, when this was put in, the -- they put all the years. So there's a whole number of sheets. You really just need to look at the first one. Feel free to look at all the others. I'm not going to speak to them. It goes back to, I think, 2016. But essentially, the plan was just to put the 2022 in. So basically, this is a list for the calendar year 2022, what we used credit cards for. As I've said multiple times, there were two credit cards. One is in my name. One was in Derek's name. That credit card, no, since he's not here, there's only one credit card right now. And I keep it locked in the safe, not in my wallet, so that I won't use it for the things that I would get in trouble using it for. So basically, if you take a look, we spent $40,756 on credit cards, which is a relatively small amount based on our spend. And if three of the accounts equal 72% of that $40,000. Travel, we all know, you can't really book travel without a credit card. Conferences, pretty much the same thing. And then the software is $9,409. Most of that is -- we bought QuickBooks. And to purchase QuickBooks, you have to -- unless you want to pay more money, you have to use a credit card. So it made sense to do that. So other than that, there's just a -- I mean, there's -- you can see there's advertising each month. So some of the advertising goes on a credit card on a fairly regular basis, but small amounts. And other than that, there's just a few specific items. If we can't get the item, let's say Plan Ops needs a very specific item for a repair, let's say, sometimes you have to reach out online. And a lot of those small online vendors only take credit cards, so we'll use that. But all in all, most every purchase that we do goes through our accounting system, and that includes various controls. So it needs to be approved by different levels of people through the process. So that is the credit card report. Any questions on that?
Ms. Brown?
So the October -- was that the conference that the three administrators, they took out to California, which I think was really fruitful? There was some really good stuff that came out of that particular conference, right?
That's exactly what that is.
Yeah. I think, I mean, we've been working on a lot of the things that you learned at that conference in curriculum. So I think there's some really great things that came from that. And in December, there was an uptick in advertising. Is that, by any chance, maybe for HR kind of stuff?
I believe it is. I believe it's for a job fair.
Okay. Which I also support.
Yes. Oh, we need job fares, yes.
Any other questions, Mr. Claffey? Do you need a motion for us to accept this?
No, I don't think so. It's more just a requirement. Okay, one of my favorite summaries each year. Maybe Mr. Claffey can do it for me next year. Okay, so one of the policies says that each year, we need to bring forward to the board all the invoices over $10,000. So basically, what this sheet is, is all the invoices for last school year. Okay? Typically, I bring this to the board in either December or January. It's a little bit behind this year, so we're getting it in early February. But basically, what I do, I get a download from the accounting system, and then I sort everything by vendor. And then I sort of then put the vendors and sort of put them by categories. And then tell you a description of what the purchase is or most of the purchases with that vendor, and then whether it was bid or whether it was approved by the BOE. So I'll just run through this quickly. The first category is utilities. Obviously, you know what all those are. Some are simply the distributors, and some of them is where we purchase the supply of electricity and/or gas. So obviously, those -- we bring the agreements for the purchase to the board, but we don't bring forward, you know, the ever-source bill because it's just something that needs to be paid if you want to keep your lights on. The next category is first student in the Conway Arena. First student is obviously the bus transportation. You can see that's $7.7 million. It's more than that because there are some smaller invoices below $10,000 that wouldn't have been included in that. But that's the cost of the transportation over that calendar year. And Conway Arena is for the hockey -- the hockey programs at the two high schools. Okay, the next set is special education tuition. All except the very first one are out-of-district tuition locations for students. Those are decided by the special ed team. It's not the type of thing that requires approval from the board. It really is whatever the special ed team and the parents and the IEP says. This is what the student needs. So you can see that there's -- you know, this was up until the last couple of years. It was -- we would run over this on the budget. The last couple of years, it's been okay because we've had fewer students. I think part of it was COVID-related. But so basically, that's what most of that is. The very top one is the special ed piece of the Adult Learning Center, the Clearway School. So we have two pieces to that. We have the special ed piece, and then we have the -- just the typical students that also go to Clearway. Okay, the next set is supply services, plant operations. So first item is like the chemical company where we get all the cleaning supplies. Then there's, on the second page, you flip it over, there's a number of it is the HVAC maintenance agreements, three of them, Siemens, Control, and Trane. So they -- those are pretty much -- So they, those are pretty much the service agreements to keep the buildings up and running. And then there's a few other items. The Santa Life that's there, that 114 is probably mostly the portable units that we purchased. And just to give you an update on Santa Life, is, they're all in now. Everything is in, in the schools that we were working on, and they're doing some tests now. So, for the most part, that system will be up and running, and if Mr. Smith is here next month, you can quiz him on any results he may have. Next group is books and supplies. Most of, most all these things have been brought up in the curriculum committee, approved by the board at that level. And, so that's pretty much is in what, what's in that grouping. The next group is probably the most wide-ranging thing, it's various services. And just to sort of highlight what some of the services are, there's, for example, about five or six lines down, there's the Clark Associates and ABC Physical Therapy, those are the OTPT services, 740 and 180, 2,000. Those are two of the largest ones. What you will also see in here that you typically don't see, the third and fourth item down, and then there's another one further down than that, White Birch and Breakthrough. That's where we don't have staff, specifically special ed type or technical staff in that regard, and we need to go outside to a provider to bring those services in. So, those numbers are higher, because we've got a number of openings in those areas. Other than that, sort of list each one, I won't go through each one. If you have any questions on those, I can let you know. Towards the end of that grouping, there's, you know, a couple of legal firms, and it's about it, I have to say, on those. The next group is computer supplies and services. Much of what's in here is the software annual licenses. When you review the budget each year, the IT director comes forward, and he or she would list all the various softwares. That's basically where the, where the approval is made. Most of these softwares run from July through June of each year. And the reason there's a lot of them here is most softwares, you pay for once a year, and it costs more than $10,000. So that's why this lists almost every single software we have. There's also in here a couple of vendors where we purchase equipment. For example, Computer Hut IT Insiders, the second one, we just approved tonight some purchases for the Title I program from that vendor. So, that's what that is. The next group is equipment. Some of this equipment has been purchased with grants, and some of this has been with SURF. SURF is the Capital Equipment Reserve Fund at the city. That's budgeted, that's mostly vehicles. So you can see Grippone, that was probably one or two vehicles. And then further down, Milton Cat, that was a loader that was brought up probably, you know, to this committee about a year and a half or so ago. But you'll see things like the CTE equipment that's been purchased over the time, the dumpster, the electric car kit that we got with the grant. All these items, for the most part, have been brought forward to the board, except for maybe, you know, things like M&amp;F Athletic Company. That's probably, you know, two different invoices that equal $29,000, and it's a lot of small items that equal it. So it's not the type of thing I typically bring to the board. But Lisa will make purchases sort of for a season, so. The next is a conference. It's the CTE dues that is part of the state, if you're going to be part of the state program, you need to pay that each year. That's based on the size of your program. It's typically been about that size for a while. Miscellaneous, there is Donors Choose, which we give $50,000 towards every year. That's where teachers can reach out and put projects in, and basically, we'll pay for half of it, and they try to get donations for the other half. The Savings Bank is the payment on the copiers, the lease we have each year with the copiers. Then this purchase of food, for the food service program, another stadium athletic equipment, and then the YMCA, most of what that is was the summer program, the Power And then, there's the deferred maintenance projects. These are all things that Mr. Smith used, for the most part, deferred maintenance dollars. So, we, if you recall, we fixed the South High School track. It's in a lot better shape than it was, that's for sure. We replaced carpeting in the North Auditorium here. We did some partitions, some demo work. So that's, that's what that is. And then by far, the largest dollar amount is the building projects via bonds. Most of these are the middle school project. So Harriman and Harvey and William Scotsman and various. The only ones that aren't is the energy-efficient investments. That's for the HVAC work at Franklin Street. And the Capital One public funding, that's when we replaced, we improved a lot of the equipment at North and South, and to provide significant energy savings, and to pay for that, we used a loan. So that, you'll see that each year going forward. It's going to be about that $450,000 each year. So that's the total of all the invoices over $10,000. Any questions?
Mr. Brown?
Do the payments from those bonds come out of our operating budget, or does that go through the city?
No, the payment for the bond is in our operating budget. And we should save enough electricity to offset the cost of the bond. And if we don't, then the vendor is supposed to pay the difference to us.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Claffey, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Real simple, are we going to be voting on anything regarding?
On this?
Yeah.
I don't know, you might just accept it. I'm not sure you vote on it or not.
Or just accept it, but it's-
Yeah.
And just, this is the fir, I think this is the first time I've gone through this. This is like an accountability, reporting kind of formality. All of these expenses were approved by the, in-budget committee or by FNO?
Yes, for the most part, that's what the column on the right is. You know, like I said, that some of the athletic things wouldn't be because, but anything that's required for the, this is a good way for me to check, to make sure that all the things are coming forward. I think the group, for the most part, is pretty well, I'll use the word trained, but when I first got here, there were things flying all over the place, but for the most part, most of this stuff gets approved. The curriculum stuff, like I said, I try to group that together. That goes through curriculum. I don't go back and verify that it goes through curriculum, but it's things, I'm pretty sure have been discussed at that committee.
Castellano, do you have any questions?
Just a comment, I guess. I did run on the new track today at South, and it's definitely better than it was before. It's not purple, but it's nice. And I did have a question about like, the, everything having to do with like the new solar panels and all that stuff, is that under here, or is that not even this past year?
Solar panels, we are getting through a PPA agreement, so we don't even pay for the solar panels. The investor, the outside investor, puts them on the building. We then get the electricity that it generates, and then after a period of six or seven years, we can reach out and purchase it. So then we'll get the full use of the energy. A piece of it goes back to pay to the investor.
Oh, okay. That's cool. Thanks.
So, I'm just-
And just to let Dante know, the purple was a $55,000 more, so.
Yeah, we decided we didn't want to charge the South School any more money-
Yeah, it would have faded eventually.
For the collection, for the students to collect, you know. You can pretend, we could put a purple screen up if you'd like. Shine it.
That's good.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the report.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Donovan, the FY '23 January financial report.
Okay. All right, we'll run through this quick. In a couple of months, we'll be switching from this format to the forecast format. But at this point in time, we'll keep running through wages. As you can see, the January full-time, the wages full-time number, 6.6 million. Two bi-weekly pays, four weekly pays, sort of matches up with October and November, which was the same number of pays. So, it's actually slightly down from those two, but it's in the ballpark. Same with the wages part-time. If you look at that number compared to those other two months, they're about the same. Overtime, that's mostly in maintenance, and some of that's the biddy basketball. So, we will be getting a credit. We'll pull out the biddy basketball costs, and we send it to Park Rec, and we'll get a credit. Haven't done that yet this year. My guess is I'll just do it once sometime March or April. Other than that, stipends, not too much, too much exciting there. And if you take a look on the far right, you can see percent used. The one category that looks like it's 100% used is retirement and separation pay, but like I said, all the teachers and people that we knew were going to retire have received that money. So what you're going to just see the rest of the year is people that have vacation time, that leave before the end of the year. We have to pay them out their vacation time. So that's pretty much what you'll just see the rest of the year. Okay, next fringe benefits, that's pretty much city allocations, so there's really not a lot of, if it runs over budget, it's not our problem. If it runs under budget, it's not our problem. It's the city's problem, so in a sense, it's all of our problem. But, should be fine. Legal services, take a quick look. You notice like in December, it was $20,000. This year, it's a minus $37. That was because there was a stale check to one of the attorneys, and then it was reversed out this month. And the reason that December was too high, was there was a payment made to Wadley Star and Peters, that's the firm we use for special ed work. So that's why that was high that month. The, if you notice staffing services, that's the payments to ESS, so that's going up, which is sort of a good thing and a bad thing. Good thing is hopefully that we're getting more subs in the door. I did speak with Brittany Duffy today, the HR director, about this, and then there's a meeting scheduled, I think, in a month or so, right? To talk about the progress and how the group is doing getting subs in. So, when we get that, we'll update probably through this committee. And the instruction service number this month, $136,000, that's quite high. And basically, the Adult Learning Center, the payments, there were three months that all hit in one month. That's why it's that high. Other than that, that page is fine. Flip over to the property services, electricity, heating, gas, and water. Keeping my eye on the electricity. It's running slightly higher than it did last year. So, we'll see how it goes, but at this point, that it may overrun that line. Shouldn't be too, too significant, but it could. Heating, gas, and water. Heating, gas is very lumpy, right, from the next two to three months. So, when that's, by the time April kicks around, we'll pretty know exactly where we are, but it should be pretty, in pretty good shape. And same with water. Water has increased, the Pennachuck rates went up, so if it does run over, it won't be a lot of money, but it might be some. Other than that, in that grouping, there's maintenance contracts and things like that. There, they're pretty much, we know what the amounts are. The percent used in those are high, but we also, you know, it's a one-time payment on many of those. Okay, other services, that group, there's not a lot, there's a lot of small amounts there. There's telephone, and then a lot of smaller accounts that pretty much look like they're doing fine on the percentage used column. They're more smaller amounts. At the very bottom of that page, you see the regular transportation services, a very small number. The December invoice didn't get in in January, it'd get in February 2nd. So, in the month of February, you'll see the transportation, the regular transportation, and on the next page, the sped transportation, you'll see those numbers basically have two months in them. Tuition out of district, which we talk about a lot. You can see there was, January had a lot of invoices. Some vendors only bill us quarterly, so that's why you'll typically see a larger amount sort of in October, January, you know, April, those months. Okay, supplies and materials. Basically, when I look at these, there's sort of three groupings. The first set of accounts, the first five or six, so those are the accounts where the schools spend most of that money. That's money given to them, it's in their budgets, and it's mostly various supplies they use at the schools. The next set, sort of the middle accounts, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, et cetera, those are pretty much managed by Plan Ops. And Mr. Smith, since I've been here, hasn't overrun any of these counts, so I'm not too concerned. And if he's going to run low, I'm sure he'll be more than happy to let me know. And then the bottom part is pretty much books, media, periodicals, subscriptions. So some of that is school-based library, and some of that is sort of the curriculum office-based items. So in total, we should be fine with those accounts. And then, the other expenses, the indirect expenses, we did not book that entry for January, so you'll see a larger number, larger negative number in February there. Flip over to the various equipment accounts, and you can see, for example, the computer equipment and the computer software, they're pretty much used up, most 85 and 91%, because we do most of those purchases early in the year. The debt service, those are the two payments that I spoke about earlier, the copiers and the energy savings equipment. And, so that sort of brings us to the end. If you look on the bottom right corner of page four there, percent used is 48.5%, which we're halfway through the school year, 50%. We're 58% through the, and this is 48, so it's slightly below that. So when you just look at that as a general guideline, we should be fine. So that's a quick update. Any questions on any accounts?
Anybody have any questions? Okay. The next one is the transfer report.
Okay, transfers, there's actually six of them, because they were two-sided. If you're looking at your screen, you'll only see three of them. So I don't know if it was me or the person that put them in, but I'll take the blame for it. The first one is from Fairgrounds Elementary. They're moving from office equipment and services to supplies, so they have more money. That's what they'll start spending down their money, which they'll do over the next couple of months. The next one, which is the first one that isn't in, because of the two-sided problem, is also from Fairgrounds. They're moving money from equipment and furniture and fixtures down to computer equipment, because they're going to purchase a projector to replace a broken one. The next one is the CTE- The next one is the CTE Career Center. They have a lot of open POs, which means they put a certain amount of money on a purchase order and then they go to that same vendor. They'll do it for food, they'll do it for certain supplies. So they just needed to upgrade the Heritage Crystal Open PO by 1,000. Next is the Nashua Technology Center, and they're basically just moving from equipments and repairs to bring it all down into supplies so they can use that account the rest of the year. The fifth one is from the curriculum office and they're moving 5,000 from program improvement services to conferences and seminars for a seminar. And the last one is New Surles, simply moving money from educational supplies to computer equipment to purchase five iPads. So there are, none of these are over 5,000. I believe the way it's worded is if it's over 5,000, it needs approval by the board. There's one that's exactly 5,000, so you can decide whether you want to make a motion or not.
You just want to make a motion to accept the transfer report? Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the FY '23 January transfer report.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Dr. Andre, do you have anything?
I'm just commending Mr. Donovan for great reports tonight.
Mr. Donovan, I sent you an email. Did you get that email I sent over to you about those carts?
Yes. What, remind me again?
They're Chromebook carts that someone sent to us via email that they were...
They were on Donors Choose?
Yeah.
Yes, so we still have Donors Choose. This, it was a teacher, it was an English teacher at South High School, actually, that put in Donors Choose. She wanted a cart for her classroom. I think it was just one cart.
Okay.
So I didn't fully understand what the question was.
I just didn't understand why would we put it on Donors Choose, you know, where we're buying all this equipment. And I want to make sure that we get the right equipment. And because an email came to us that it was like, I can't believe that this is happening, you know? So that's why I sent it to you, to find out why.
Well, any, any equipment, any computer equipment that's purchased through Donors Choose, they still have to go through the process. So IT has to approve. So if they're going to buy a cart, it would be an IT-approved cart. If they're going to buy a computer equipment, it would be IT reviews all that.
Okay.
And then they bring, if it's Chromebooks, for example, they'll use, they'll buy the same Chromebooks. IT will set them up, so to speak, put them on the system. And so simply because the funding source is different through Donors Choose, it still has to go through the same process.
Okay.
So just in regards to that email, I was in contact with the high school principal, who was contacting the teacher who forwarded the email. There are Chromebooks in the building that we can distribute to that teacher without any purchases being made. So I think that was settled at that level and we don't have to go all to Donors Choose. So I'll follow up with the high school principal tomorrow, but I thought it was settled that we have enough inventory in the building to satisfy that teacher's request.
Okay, because, you know, things come to us and I don't answer because, you know, we don't know what's going on behind the scenes here. But when something like this and then somebody makes a comment about it, you have to say, well, why are we, is somebody jumping the process? Did they not go through the system the way they should? If we have the equipment, why are we asking for this? So I just want to make sure. So when questions come to us, I can bring it up at the meeting, so if anybody's watching, they can get the answer to this. And then no questions come back to us. Thank you for the explanation. Anybody have any other? Ms. Brown?
So just in regards to that, is there an update on where we are on like one-to-one status and Chromebook distribution?
So we have multiple kind of conversations going on over the fall of what my expectations were and what happened at the buildings were maybe two different things. But it is, I hope that there'll be a better plan over the spring and really advertise of what's going to happen in the fall. So I've been working with the Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Poska, the high school principals, the technology department, to come up with, what is that systematic plan that every student, we have the inventory in the district currently that every sixth through 12th grader can have a Chromebook. And so it's my intent that it's not optional, like that's same thing as getting a textbook. And the way that it rolled out said, hey, Dan, if you want a Chromebook, come and see us. It wasn't, so it didn't create the urgency. So this spring, we're coming up with a better communication plan. We have the inventory. We'll be at the next BOE meeting. We're looking at hiring a coordinator of digital learning who's going to help us with that deployment. So I'm feeling better about it, but I was really hoping that by now, sixth through 12, we would be one-to-one. So if we're expecting our teachers to use more technology in the classroom to amplify students' voice and choice and empower our students through whatever ed tech tools that are available, students need to have a Chromebook or a device in front of them and it's hard to teach with using those devices if only three kids have the device. So we have to change the culture.
Thanks, that's really good, a really good update to hear, because I'm guessing more it's going to be more like you have to opt out of not taking one rather than opting into having one.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's...
That's really good to hear. Thank you.
Any other comments?
So I have something on a kind of different subject, but I feel like I should say it since we're in the middle of budget planning season, so I'm going to throw my pitch out here now, you know, for all of the people that are tuning in to the Tuesday night end of a finance meeting. So tonight, I was a few minutes late because I was coming from Elm Street Middle School. They, both the boys and the girls made the playoffs and, which was awesome. And the girls lost their game, but it was, I left before the boys had started and it was great. They've fought hard. They've got a really small but feisty team in the Division One in the state. And they're playing mostly against teams that, our team is, the majority was sixth graders. And they're playing against teams that are almost entirely eighth graders. And the reason that works out is because most of those other teams, particularly in Division One bracket, have B teams. So I would like to advocate for some consideration for B teams in the budget moving forward. I know that's something that Lisa has to do, but I'd love to make it happen. I think it's a really good opportunity to connect with kids in a different way outside the classroom and we can include more kids, you know? I know that the girls' team, just at Elm Street, and I know this happens citywide, they had to cut 15 kids. If we'd had a B team, they could have maybe not been playing five nights a week, but been doing something. Boys, I think they cut 30 kids. Same thing with soccer. So I think there's a really good opportunity to connect with more people. So that's something that I just would like to advocate for, both on a personal level and because I think it would really do some good for the city. Secondarily, this is not having to do with the Board of Education particularly, but it does affect us because it has to do with the Elm Street building. Today, the mayor and I think Alderman Dowd, maybe not, I don't know who it was, held a meeting down at City Hall with the new architects to replace Elm Street Middle School at 1 o'clock in the afternoon on a Tuesday. Not a lot of parents can go to that, not a lot of teach, no teachers can go to that because they're all working. And none of, most of the people that live in the surrounding area around Elm Street Middle School are working families. And so I think that was a really uncool thing to do.
Can I just ask something?
Hold on a second. Well, I'm getting, I'm getting my point. I'm advocating for sports here and I think it might be more necessary to go to B teams because if there's an intent for the city to take down Elm Street Middle School, which currently is not in their ownership, we are currently still the people that...
Well, that's it.
Give the direction to what can happen with the school, but they're already making plans.
They impeded the process.
When we take down the Elm Street auditorium, it is going to take down the biggest gymnasium in the entire city. It's bigger than north, it's bigger than south. And it doesn't get just used for the Elm Street Middle Schools, it gets used for biddy basketball. Biddy basketball, which actually you mentioned tonight, and that's why this actually even kind of struck me, I wasn't even thinking about going on this big soapbox tonight. We give a big check to biddy basketball. It's the number one program for youth rec programs. Nobody gets excluded. It's $20 and if you don't have 20 bucks, they'll even write you off the 20 bucks. You get a T-shirt, the season goes on for four months, volunteer coaches. It brings the community together. If, and probably when, the Elm Street Middle School auditorium is knocked down, already, they're, they're holding practices all around the city for biddy basketball until 9:30, 10 o'clock at night on weeknights and all weekend long. It is just taking away more resources for the city that I think help the youth, not just in the schools and those kids that maybe they haven't had enough experience to make middle school or high school teams, they can still show up for rec leagues. And so it's kind of breaking my heart that that is, even any kind of concept of salvaging that space is being put on the wayside. So I'll get off my soapbox. There's nothing I can actually do about that except for advocate then more heartily for more programming at our middle schools to include more children. Thank you.
I just want to say, because I've said to people, I hate to see Elm Street go. And I just want to say this, that, and I've spoken to the mayor about this, that Elm Street still belongs to the school district. And for him and Rick Dowd or anybody else to start coming in now, they're impeding the process. We have not turned over the keys nor the building and they get that when we vacate the building. And I think they're jumping the gun a little bit. I would love to see what we could do with Elm Street rather than turn it into a lot of apartments. I would even want to just see if non, private schools would want the building. But I think it's a sad thing, and I've said it many times, I've said it at meetings, and the mayor, like he did with the teacher's contract, he impeded the process and you can't do that. There's a process and the process has to play out. And shame on Rick Dowd because he's been around for a long time in the city. He was on the board, he was, I believe, on the planning board. He's done a lot of good for the city. Sit back and wait till we turn over the keys to that building. Don't throw us out sooner rather than later. Mr. Claffey, do you have anything to say on the...
I just was going to ask what this meeting has to do with finance and operations directly. I just didn't understand the relevance. That's, don't interrupt, don't interrupt. I didn't interrupt you. So I feel as if, just these comments deserve to be, and I'll ask questions about, I don't understand why having a B team would help a team that cut all these people that's starting sixth graders, but that's, I'll ask that at budget or whatever. Going back to the email about the Donors Choose, and you, Mr. Donovan, Dr. Andre, it seems to be that Donors Choose, even though we match funds, saves the district money. And I went in to look at this request by a teacher I know. Her request was matched and it looked like she saved the city $390 if we matched what she donated. So I don't even know who this email is from, this, this person who emailed us, I don't know if they're a parent, but I don't feel compelled to respond to that if this person hasn't gone through the proper channels. But isn't it fair that teachers save the district money, taxpayers' money, by using Donors Choose? So why would there ever be an issue? I don't, please?
Well, I mean, the program is, the school district puts 50,000 from our budget each year into the program. The teacher then puts up a proposal to purchase something, let's say $500, 250 of it would come out of that 50,000 if they get another 250 from other donors. So yes, we can sort of double our money, so to speak.
I'm not trying to make a big, I just wanted to understand. I wanted to make sure that we were going by the process. If we want to save money, if teacher wants, that's fine, but we get an email and I'm just questioning, you know, why with this email would somebody complain or be upset, you know, if we're following the process? And that's fine with me. So, you know, I like to ask questions because I want to make sure that we're, we're doing things right here and there's no reason, I would let anybody ask questions on this committee. I should have asked Ms. Brown to stop, but, you know, maybe the mayor would hear this about the kids. I mean, this is about our kids in our system here and kids in the basketball, too.
We don't know what this meeting was about. All we know is at 1 o'clock, you didn't tell us anything about, for all I know, there, let me finish. There's a discussion about what to do with the furniture. I don't want to talk, I said we shouldn't be talking about that now and I really don't want to waste any more time doing that at finance and operations. And I didn't mean to be accusatory or critical of the, the Donors Choose thing. I just, you know, we get these emails that come from nowhere and I think if this person had asked us about Donors Choose or found out more, instead of just barfing out complaints that have no real ground, it's just too big.
I sent my, I sent the email over to Mr. Donovan. That's when, when we get emails like this, I don't answer and I'll just send them over either Dr. Andre or Mr. Donovan, wherever it fits. And I just wanted to make sure tonight at the meeting that this was taken care of, that everything was all set with it. I don't answer them, I just send them out to the appropriate people. And that's what we really should be doing because it's not our job to handle all of this. And if there's a problem and it needs to be addressed, you know, though, I had said to Mr. Donovan, does this need to be put on the agenda for us to talk about? And if so, could you ask Howard to please change the agenda? So I'm trying to be fair and I'm trying to, you know, anything that needs to come to the public, so there's transparency.
And I, may I just respond?
You can.
I certainly would yield to your extensive experience over mine. I just, when I started here, I thought that we were supposed to make sure that the chain of command had been followed before it got to us. And it wasn't clear to me that this person who complained had done any of that. All she had to do was send an email to the principal at South, because that's clearly where the teacher's from, if you looked at her post, and say, hey, what's going on at South? Rather than going directly to us and then bothering Mr. Donovan, who just spent seven hours doing something. I just think he has better things to do. But I'm not, please don't be offended or take this as a criticism. It's just, I thought that we were supposed to respond differently to emails like that.
And you're right, but some people in the community don't understand the chain of command and they don't know it and they'll go to the board and voice their complaints. I mean, we've gotten several emails recently that I have no idea what they're talking about and I'm not going to answer them because I have no clue. So they come to the board figuring the board can take care of everything and, and make things right, which we can't. We have to do the chain of command. So if anything comes, again, if emails come that I can't do anything with and we're not supposed to, if we answer as a group, as a group meeting, if we email the whole board. So normally, and Dr. Andre knows, I'll send him an email and say to him, could you please address the parent, et cetera? And that's, I feel that's the best way. And then this way, it's out of our hands. Okay, Ms. Brown?
I was actually glad to get, our job here, in my opinion, is to be representatives of the community to, if people have questions about what's going on in the school district, it is our job, not necessarily to cause an argument, but to make sure that it's transparent about how things are happening. I actually think it was good to find out about that particular item because it was, gave us, gave us an opportunity, this is about the Chromebook cart. I support teachers using Donors Choose to get specified things to their classroom needs. However, I think this is, I think the reason that we, there was some outrage in that particular email is because we thought that our district was one-to-one and it was sad for a teacher to have to use her classroom money, her social capital, to have to advocate for something that she should already have had. So I actually think it, this is a good opportunity, because that came in that way, for us to follow up and hold the district accountable, to say, you know what, hey, where are the Chromebooks? Why did this lady have to go, go ask the parents? I actually don't fault the teacher for doing that, but sometimes they don't even know who to ask either for their things. So I think in this case, it, it may sound like it was a complaint, but I think it actually had a positive outcome because we can move forward and gives us an opportunity to explain to the community, hey, we're working on this. This is a top priority. As Dr. Andre said, we want to have our... We want to have our kids have access to technology, we're gonna make it happen. So, I think that it, but it was, it gave us an opportunity to address the issue.
Mr. Claffey?
Thank you. My, my immediate reaction to the email was, this is somebody from the community lashing, lashing out based on no information, and I will tell you, as someone who taught before, you know, we had, kids don't always bring their computers to class, they certainly forget their chargers. So, to assume that because kids got a laptop or a Chromebook, means that they have it in class, is very, very inaccurate.
I was gonna ask you, being, yeah, being a former teacher, your opinion, I'm glad you gave it to us. You know, because you see things differently than in the eyes of us, and that's why I said, when the email came in, it is not, I can't answer the question, because I'm not in the day-to-day operation like none of us are, we're over here to oversee. So, the best thing to do when we don't have an answer is to send it to administration, like I did. Dr. Andre? Sorry about that.
So, two things I just, that we're working on really hard at the budget, is I don't want any teacher to say, I'm not getting what I need. So, Mr. Claffey, a couple of times, what's the, the chain of command? So, Assistant Superintendent Poska and myself, mostly at the secondary level, the elementaries, I think are, budget-wise, around instructional supplies are a lot tighter. The middle schools and high schools are, have been a little looser on, if I'm an English teacher or a social studies teacher, how do we ensure that every teacher is getting what they need? So, that, from an operational point of view, that we're meeting the needs of our teachers, so that they don't have to go to Donors Choice, or they don't have to go somewhere else. But I don't want to get an email in August saying, I didn't get X. So, we're trying to solidify, making sure if you're a social studies teacher, you're in contact with the department chair, the department chair's in contact with the building principal, building principal's in contact with central office on curriculum issues. So, what do we need for supply, instructional supplies, materials? So, we want to ensure that, that. I think we're very lucky that we have a very talented and skillful CFO, that's able to move money around, so that our students get what they need. So, it pains me when I hear a teacher is spending X, Y, and Z, I'm like, but we have a line for that. Why isn't, why aren't we spending that down? So, we, we're trying to really work hard on making sure a teacher is not going to Donors Choice, and not going to the parents, if they don't have to, if we have those resources. Like, again, we went through the financials, and we have unspent money in some of the lines, especially in instructional supplies. Like, why aren't we, we're budgeting for that money, spending that money down? So, we're trying to get a lot tighter on that, so no one is actually in August saying they're in a panic mode. So, so we're getting a little closer on that. So, whether it's technology, whether it's a replacement textbooks, or a replacement readers, or whatever that, that is, we're trying to work really hard with the secondary schools to clean up that process, and we can follow the chain of command, because right now, it just seems like it's a little bit of the Wild, Wild West, so.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Okay. Anything else from you gentlemen? I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And we're adjourned at 6:18.